Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is September the 17th, 2019. We're here at 6:02 at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Senior Pastor Mike Corb with the First Baptist Church of Granbury to do our invocation. He is here, isn't he? Mike Corb here. Well, yes, sir. We'll have Father Stewart step up. He's in the warm-up cage there. There he is. Followed by the Pledge Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilman Tony Allen. All rise, please. Thank you, Father Stewart.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the gift of this day, for all your blessings to us. We thank you especially for this community that it is our privilege to belong to. We thank you for the freedoms this country enjoys, the liberties, and especially for self-government. What a precious gift that is to us, Lord. And pray that you would bless this city council as they seek to do right for this community. Pray that you would give them wisdom and understanding, patience with one another, and the willingness to believe that great things are ahead because you will help them in all of their decisions and deliberations. We ask all this for Jesus' sake. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, join me in the vanguard flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas flag.
On our Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We've got a real treat before you start off the meeting here. We're going to have a... We're going to recognize the Granbury High School Percussion Ensemble for being chosen as an international champion and selected to perform at the Percussion Arts Society International Convention. So if I could get all those kiddos to come on in. They're already in. Come on up front here.
Where's the drums?
Drum line.
And they're led by their Director Tao Kirk over there. Congratulations. We want to congratulate you on your outstanding achievements of being chosen as an international champion and selected to perform at the Percussion Arts Society International Convention. I understand that your group is one of only three high-school-level percussion ensembles in the world to receive this distinction, and this is one of the highest achievements possible for a high-school-level percussion ensemble to earn. On top of all of that, you are also making Granbury High School history. It is truly exciting to see students from Granbury earn such an incredible accomplishment. It's an honor to have such devoted and talented students representing not only Granbury High School but our community. Each of you have demonstrated remarkable qualities of hard work, dedication, and sheer determination. So the council and I are proud of each of you, and we rally behind your success. I extend best wishes to you all for your prestigious showcase concert in November and for your continuing success. At this time, I would like to present each and every one of you an official Granbury pin so that as you go on your travels, you can let folks know where you're from. I'm going to have Ms. Reiner here assist me here.
It's over here, mayor, behind you.
You're doing a good job, Chris.
Don't forget the teacher.
Yeah. Director.
Here they are. Let's give them one big hand here. They have really... We know they want to rush home and do their homework for tonight, so we won't make them stay for the whole council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, Granbury's starting to be recognized with a lot of these international awards and things like that. It's amazing that the things that are coming out of the school districts over there, they've also got the F1 that's going to be participating, and then, once again, and Dobby, and I was just over here today and looked at them watching build that Eagle's Nest, the plane, and they're on their number-three plane out there now. And so that's a great achievement there at the high school. So they're doing... They're putting out some really good kiddos out there, you know, and I'm really proud to have them here in Granbury and to represent Granbury. So our next official proclamation is for Constitution Week, and I think we have a couple ladies out here. Ms. Cook and Ms... Help me out.
Dean Harris.
Dean Harris, I'm sorry. Okay. You guys want to come up here? You know, I write all this stuff down, then I leave it up to the dais, so you know. Doesn't do me any good, does it? And we do one of these every year, and I think sometimes... I think you've been here before and received it, but it's really important to us to recognize this time of the year for the Constitutional Week. The official proclamation reads, "Whereas September 17th, 2019 marks 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Nenuot, the Mayor of the City of Granbury, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week." Thank you, ladies. Our next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. We've got several items on the Consent Agenda, Council. First, we've been considering approving the city council meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2019, special meeting and the regular meeting. Number two, consider adopting Resolution Number 1922, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with the Petty and Associates Incorporated to assist the city of Granbury with creating a tax increment reinvestment zone for a new development owned by New Era Development. Number three, consider adopting Resolution Number 1923, supporting the goals and ideas of the 2020 Census requesting affiliates and membership to work together to achieve an accurate and complete count and establishing a complete count committee in cooperation with all other agencies within Hood County. And number four, consider adopting Resolution Number 1924, granting the city of Granbury written consent to the inclusion within the Acton Municipal Utility District, AMUD, specified property 50... I'm sorry, 4053 Acton Highway located in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and providing an effective date. And number five, consider approving architectural improvements for the new water treatment plant, Phase II 1.0 MGD ground storage tank, which includes the nonessential aesthetic features in the amount of $125,160. And number six, consider adopting ordinance Number 1967, amending the operation budget for the General Utility Airport and Tourism Fund for fiscal year 2018-2019. And number seven, consider authorizing advertising for sealed bids for the sale of 100x100 King Hangar with a reserve. So, Council, you've had an opportunity to look all these consent items over. Are there any changes or any questions or any of them that you wish to pull off of the Consent Agenda at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
If we could, I'd like to pull out item number six and have Ava kind of go over what some of those amendments are to the budget.
Okay, we've got a request from Councilman Mobley to pull off item number six. Council, any more changes or items you'd like to discuss on the Consent Agenda?
I have a... On number seven...
Councilman Allen. Okay.
He wants to pull it.
Oh, you want to pull it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got one question that we're going to ask when you call it.
Okay. So we've got a request to pull item number six and item number seven off the Consent Agenda. Council, any more discussion on the Consent Agenda or any items you'd like to discuss or pull off the Consent Agenda at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said Consent Agenda, less item number six and item number seven.
So moved.
I have that motion from Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That Consent Agenda is approved, less item number six and item number seven. With that said, we'll move into the Deliberation Agenda, moving item number six and seven at the top of the Deliberation Agenda. Item number six being consider adopting orders Number 1967, amending the operation budget for the General Utility Airport and Tourism Fund for fiscal year 2018-2019. Mr. Kaufman, do you have some staff report on that item?
That... I would like to just say that, you know, it is the last meeting of the fiscal year, so we have to do a cleanup, and I ask that you go to put together a summary for you of all this so that we can go through it very easily with a visual help. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Gregory, our Director of Finance.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, City Manager. I prepared a presentation to summarize all the budget amendments that we have reviewed at the end of the year. As you know, during the year, various projects arises, and these are unforeseen projects or we... that require amendment of our current budget. And mainly, what we are trying to do here is recognize revenues that the city received beyond what we budgeted and as well as recognize the associated expenses with these revenues. So I will go over these amendments. I have separated them into different projects. The first one are the developments that have taken place in Granbury where the city received funds. The first two are developments that we have received funds for electric infrastructure, and those are, again, we are offsetting revenues with expenses. And the third one, I'm mentioning the miscellaneous developments are engineering fees. Again, the city collected from developers and turned around and paid these engineering fees. So this is amounts to the Lakeview Shopping Center, $28,243, grazing canes, $5,443, and the miscellaneous developments, engineering fees below over $15,000. Again, we received revenues for these, so we're just recognizing the revenues and the expenses. The next slide shows various projects and improvements that, again, have taken place during the year. The first one is lift station number one. This project was approved back in December 2018 where the city had been approved from the Texas Department of Agriculture for a grant in the amount of $275,000. So at this point, the city is recognizing the grant revenue as well as expenditures related to lift station number one improvements. The second one is the water storage tank. This is relating to one of the items you just approved. The city is budgeting to offset the expenditures related to the architectural design and the extra improvements that we're wanting to do beyond what Texas Water Development Board approved, and that's going to cost $125,000. Here, we are offsetting the expenditures with water revenues. Water revenues are higher than budgeted, so we are able to do that adjustment. The third one is the marquee sign replacement for the Lake Granbury Conference Center. The bid came in... The proposal came in at $77,000. Here, we are using hot revenues to offset these expense. Hot revenues are up about 22 percent, $126,000 for the year, so we are able to make that adjustment. The next one is our upgrade of our ERP system, which we call InCode. It's in dire need of an upgrade. We are making that adjustment and moving forward with the Phase One of the upgrade during the next fiscal year, so we are proposing to make an adjustment in the amount of $45,900. As you know, we have acquired a property from GISD, and we had to do a property survey, so we had to recognize that expense, and we are able to cover that expense within another department. So we are reducing another department's expense line item and able to cover that cost with that. And the last one is the application expense for the Trail Fund through Texas Wildlife Trail Fund, and that is just the expense for the application that we are submitting. On the next slide, we are summarizing some of the additional funding that we have either received or we are trying to make adjustment for. The first one is the airport fuel sales. We are, at this point, we are recognizing revenues that we are receiving and expenses that we will have to pay to be able to buy extra fuel before the end of the year. We start in August, maybe even earlier. We start projecting our expenditures out and making sure we have enough budget for the remainder of the year, and this is where we have been able to identify that we will have to buy more fuel before the year is over, but we ensure that the revenues to offset the expense. So that's what we are doing here. The next ones are insurance proceeds that we have received from our insurance company for damages or replacements or different type of coverage that the city has for the listed equipment, and like you see, one is lift station lightning repair. We were able to replace the roof on the American Town Hall. So these are, again, we are recognizing revenues and offsetting expenditures. For the Bridge Street Museum History Center, we are recognizing revenues that we already have holding in reserves, so we are able to recognize the revenue and the expenditures the Bridge Street Museum had for some projects that they had during the year. These are funds that they had received for donations, but the city is holding in reserves. And the last ones are donations that we had received for two different projects. One is the train depot in the amount of $2,350, and the other one is the Opera House Elevator Repair. That was a matching grant from the Inch Foundation. And lastly, the last slide summarizes some of the items that we call housekeeping items. We have adjusting the budget. We have budgeted to... Previously, we received revenue from the theater company where they reimbursed us for utilities that we paid on their behalf, starting on 1st of January, and they have taken over their own utility account, so we no longer need that line item that we had expensed, the utilities, and we no longer are receiving revenues from them. So we are just reducing our budget for... To recognize that change. We also recognize that we under-budgeted our electric expenditures for the city, so we have to make an adjustment in the amount of $30,000 in the utility fund to recognize some of the extra electricity projections that we under-budgeted. But again, in one department, we over-budgeted electricity; in another one, we under-budgeted, so we are able to just do that wash and move the expense from one department to the other. Because of increased developments in the city, we had increased costs for engineering, so we are recognizing that expense, city engineering projects in the amount of $21,000. We are, again, able to cover these expense with some savings from other utility departments, but because we have to budget in the right department and in order to move monies from one department to another, we have to have council approval. Tax collection fee from Hood County Central Appraisal District. As you are aware, we have not received the correct budget estimate last year from the appraisal district. They're under-budgeted their estimates with each entity. The shortfall for the city was $15,500, but because we have collected enough in property taxes, we are able to make that adjustment, basically recognizing revenues for property taxes and expenditures for the Hood County appraisal district. Acton 380 Agreement, we have an agreement with Acton Hood County Development. We are reimbursing them for sales tax for their portion, and because they are... Have increased collection, there was a sales tax audit where a taxpayer was found who wasn't paying enough, so now we had to reimburse Acton more than we budgeted. We also are able to offset that with increased sales tax collection. And the last item is the city engineer budget. As you know, we have hired a city engineer, and we just need to make a slight adjustment to recognize some of the expenses that... To allow her to work for the city through September 30th. And that will conclude all the adjustments that we have proposing to do.
Thank you, Ava.
Thank you, Ava. So, Council, there's a lot of good numbers there to look at, but thank you for presenting that to us so that we kind of better understand where those things are coming from. Council, do you have any questions for Ava or any staff members or Chris on this? Hearing none, I'll entertain a...
I have one, Mayor.
Mr. Allen.
I was waiting for Mr. Mobley. He's the one that put it on there. I didn't want to jump ahead of him.
She answered my question.
Thanks, sir. On that city engineer, $7,600, explain that to Chris. What does it mean there?
Well, we hired a city engineer, and she began work this month, and we need to pay her.
One month?
Yeah.
Okay. We didn't have her in the budget?
No. She starts in October on the budget.
Yes, yeah.
But we got her here a little earlier.
We're paying her $7,600 a month?
You're paying her more than that a month. She started on the 12th. Would you add up benefits and everything? She's an engineer. She's not a...
So we're not going to need freezing nickels for her?
Administrator, sir. Not as much.
What percent would you say?
Well, whatever we do with freezing nickels is passed through, so we just charge the developer for it if that's your concern.
Yeah, but if we're going to do that, are we still going to be able to... We're going to be able to benefit from her if we're still going to pass it through?
Yes.
Well, what?
We're going to charge for the plan review and for her to do it as well.
We're already doing that, right?
Yeah, we charge for that.
But that's through freezing nickels, and you're saying we won't need amendment for that?
We plan on using this engineer more and more and more. We just can't automatically just stop what we've been doing. We've got to feather her into this process.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy anytime we can do away with paying outside money.
Well, the thing is, is that's passed through. We collect it from the developers. Whatever we pay freezing nickels, we charge the developers for that.
They're the developer grats, too.
Sure. And we'll be charging for the fees for our new engineer.
I think they get it on time and everything. They won't rap.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Is this not an effort to kind of streamline the process?
Yes.
Thank you.
In much-needed areas, probably, yeah. Okay, Council, any more questions on item number six? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance Number 1967.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Reiner and a second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item that we pulled off was item number seven, consider authorizing advertising for sealed bids of the sale of the 100x100 King Hangar with a reserve. And Mr. Allen, you wanted that pulled off? Is there some questions there to the city manager?
Okay, my question is this... Thank you, Mayor. City manager, have we already got bids for a new hangar to be built out there?
No, we have not.
How do we know how much to get for this one if we're going to build another one?
In your packet, we've got your copy of the appraised value of that hangar.
I see that, $500,000.
Right, and that's just for the building, not the land.
I understand.
So we'll enter into a lease for the land should we sell this hangar?
I understand, but what I'm saying is if you build a brand-new hangar tomorrow, say we sell this one, and it's not that old, by the way.
Right, it's 2012.
And we turn around and sell this one, and we build a new one, what's it going to cost the taxpayers?
We'll know that whenever we advertise for bids.
But do you think we're kind of getting the horse ahead of the cart here or behind it, or however you say it?
Cart before the horse.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, I don't. I believe that in developing our economics out there, there's an interested party or two that's interested in purchasing that hangar and for immediate use as soon as they can get their planes in there, and they plan on building another one probably in the future too. But the current layout of the land is being developed now where we've got three new hangars being built within the next 90 days. They're going to all be before us, and one of the leases has already been signed, and another one was signed today by the developer, and then there's another hangar. So basically, our existing large hangar space until we get the new runway built...
We're already doing that, right?
Yeah, we, we charge for that.
But that's through freezing nickels, and you're saying we won't need them in for that?
We, we plan on using this engineer more and more and more. We just can't automatically just stop what we've been doing. We've gotta feather, feather her into this process.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy anytime we can do away with paying outside money.
Well, the, the thing is, is that's passed through. We collect it from the developers. Whatever we pay freezing nickels, we charge the developers for that.
They're a developer graps, too.
Sure. And we'll be charging for the fees for our new engineer.
I think they get it on time and everything. They won't rap.
Mr. Mayor?
Captain Mobley.
Is this not an effort to kind of streamline the process?
Yes.
Thank you.
Much needed areas, probably, yeah. Okay, council, any more questions on item number six? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 1967.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman, Councilman Reiner, and second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item that we pulled off was item number seven, consider authorizing advertising for sealed bids of the sale of the 100-100 King Hangar with a reserve. And Mr. Allen, you wanted that pulled off? Is there some questions there to the city manager?
Okay, my question is this, uh, thank you, Mayor. City manager, have we already got bids for a new hangar to be built out there?
No, we have not.
How do we know how much to get for this one if we're gonna build another one?
In your packet, we've got your copy of the appraised value of that hangar.
I see that, $500,000.
Right, and that's just for the building, not the, the land?
I understand.
So we'll enter into a lease for the land should we sell this hangar?
I understand. But what I'm saying is if you build a brand-new hangar tomorrow, say we sell this one, and it's not that old, by the way.
Right, it's 2012.
And we, we turn around and sell this one, and we bill a new one, what's it gonna cost the taxpayers?
We'll know that whenever we advertise for bids.
But do you think we're kind of getting the horse ahead of the cart here, or behind it, or however you say it?
Cart before the horse.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, I don't. I believe that in developing our, our economics out there, there's an interested party or two that's interested in purchasing that hangar and for immediate use as soon as they can get their planes in there. And they have planned on building another one probably in the future, too. But the current layout of the land is being developed now where we've got three new hangars being built within the next 90 days. They're gonna all be before us. And one of the leases has already been signed, and another one was signed today by the, by the developer. And then there's another hangar. So basically, our existing large hangar space until we get the new runway built is consumed, spoken for. So we need to, to be planning the future for the, the new runway and the development of those hangar spaces.
I agree, I agree with you. But we already got that rented out right now, right?
No, sir. You got one plane in it.
There's nothing in there?
You have one plane in it.
And how much we losing a month?
Probably 15 to 200, $2,000, 1,500 to 2,000 a month.
Okay.
To take the cash flow.
Just say you go build another, and that was 2012. We know what that cost us. And now it's 2019. If that thing goes up to, let's just say, 600, 700,000.
Well, it's a metal building with a big hangar door, and, and basically, the value of it is $50 a foot without the land now. Now, you tell me, you're a builder.
I don't build metal buildings.
I think, I think-
I mean, I, I wouldn't do it.
I think we're at a competitive price. But here's the thing, you're talking about somebody gonna fill it up with, with planes and use it for their business. And, and if they, if they're the successful bidder, they'll have four planes in there being used and buying jet fuel all the time. Right now, we've got one plane in there renting it, buying fuel.
So you would, you would say probably you wouldn't be interested in building a new one right now anyway?
Right.
Okay.
I wanna pay the debt off for the one that we've got, is what I would like to do. And, and any, any that's left over, if there's room down the road to build another one, we should.
What happened to the agreement where somebody out there was gonna bill and pay for one?
He's doing it.
Huh?
There's a man doing it right now.
So?
There's, there's three people doing it.
Is it different, a hangar?
Different job, different project.
No, remember the one that said that he would take it and bring four planes in?
Mm-hmm.
And he'd build a new hangar?
He's still talking about building another hangar.
For us?
No, for him.
Okay.
We're, we're not doing a swap and a trade and all that. We're just talking the straight-up sale.
I just hate to take taxpayers' money and lose 200,000 on a deal. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we're not gonna lose anything.
Where's the guy that's going in there now?
He's, he's one of the bidders.
So he may, what happened? He don't win?
The next guy'll move in.
Come out ahead.
So he'll lose.
He needs to bid.
So we do lose. I agree.
Well, no, you, you really game. You pay off a debt.
Yeah.
You know, you pay off-
And then you turn around and pour money, go back at that again.
I can't imagine us building a hangar that big and only having it occupied maybe half time and, and saying we need to hang on to it.
Yeah.
You know, if it was leased like the, like the area back there.
I won't be on the council, but I hope, I hope everybody up there feels that way.
Well, that's why you're voting on it, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Captain Mobley.
Chris, could you, is there any equity built up on the current hangar? Or is it all debt?
You know, I believe that it was built in 2012 with some other projects. The, the debt structure, I wasn't around then, so there's a lot of things that got built.
Tied into the same debt.
All in the same debt. And we're talking about selling a part of it to pay off the rest of the debt.
But it'll pay off every, it'll pay off everything?
Yeah.
Okay, so effectively, it is, it's paying off debt for other projects. Okay.
But yeah, I mean, if you feel like you have-
So it's not a why? We haven't been paying on it for seven years, and we're gonna get no benefit?
Right, we, we, we've had a debt, but we've been servicing it with revenue from that hangar. And some of it doesn't generate revenue. Some of it was apron improvements, and some of it was whatever. I don't know off the top of my head. But again, that was seven years ago, and a lot's changed since then. And we, we are moving forward with our, with our new runway, and that's gonna open up a whole new area for hangars to be constructed upon.
Would, would any of these projects be considered if it weren't for the new airport?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We also pay tax now, though.
We, we pay property tax on everything out there now.
Yeah, that we get in the fourth.
Right. So at the end of the day, if, if we have a bidder that meets our reserve, then we'll bring it back to y'all on November 5th, and you can vote on, on that night whether to award it to the high bidder. That's the process. But before I put it in the newspaper, I wanted to make sure y'all were in agreement with that.
So have you had some conversation with our director out there, possibly? I mean, 'cause there's a lot of folks that hang out there, somebody that's possibly interested?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have definite bidder or bid orders. And there's probably a couple more that we don't know about.
Right, after you put it out. Council, any more questions on this item, on item number seven? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion authorizing advertising for the sealed bids of the sale of the 100-100 by King Hangar with a reserve.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Before we move into our deliberation agenda, I would like to ask the public if anybody in the public wishes to make any public comment on any of the items on the agenda at this Hearing none, we'll close that, and we will move into the deliberation agenda. First item being item number eight, consider accepting the overall best bid and approval of expenditures for $77,000 to BNS Southern Sign and Crane. Chris, I'm gonna ask you to give us a staff report on that one, please.
So before I turn it over to Michael, I would just like to say that I've been here about four and a half years now, and, and the marquee at the conference center has been a, what do you call it, a thorn in your side?
Something like that.
As you drive by, and it looks, it looks bad. And there's technology out there that we can do so much better to present ourselves. And so I asked Michael to look into this, and I'll turn it over to Michael to give us a report.
Thank you, Chris, council. We did, along those lines, we did go out for bids. We received three bids to replace the electronic marquee. The three bids are in your packet. The apparent low bidder was Castile and Associates. However, their, their bid did not meet the specifications. Not only did they not provide the specifications, but what they did provide, the sign was 18 inches smaller than, than the spec. And so we are recommending the second low bidder, which is BS Southern Sign and Crane Services. And their bid is $67,778. We are asking for a contingency of $9,222 for a grand total of $77,000, which will allow for any unforeseen issues with that installation as they pull off, pull out the existing sign and rebuild and install this new one. As well as, that will allow for the replacement of the static backlit sign that you have a picture of in your packet, I hope. I don't know if we can pull that up as well, Carla? No? But there's a picture of the sign that shows a circle around the one that currently says Hilton Garden Inn closest to the street. And that is on both sides of, of the street, that is a static backlit sign that we will change to become the City of Lake Granbury Conference Center with their logo. And the one that says "The Great American Grill" at this time will become the Hilton sign alone, and it may also incorporate "The Great American Grill." But that will give us the logo, the city logo there on the, the street side will replace the electronic marquee in the middle. And the Hilton has said they plan to do this, at the same time, replace their sign with their new branding, branding materials. And so where we are tonight is a recommendation for council to accept the overall best bid from BNS Southern Sign and Crane Services for the replacement of that electronic marquee for $67,778, and to approve the expenditure of up to $77,000. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael. Council, do you have any questions for Michael or Chris on this, on this item?
Is it in our agreement, Mayor, to, to leave Hilton advertising up there?
Yes. And they've agreed to, to pay for their new signage with their new logo?
Correct.
And by the way, those are backlit signs that haven't been operating for probably a decade.
The lights are there, they just haven't been operating.
But, but in other words, that price will come off of the 67.
No, that price does not include their sign.
Yes, sir. We'll get credit back to that.
This price, this price, this contingency would only cover our sign replacement with, and any, and any other unforeseen. There's a separate price that Hilton will pay directly to the same sign contractor for their sign. Does that make sense?
We're not touching their sign, and they're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
And they're in agreement with this. They're excited about the change.
As they should be. Council, any more questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the overall best bid from BNS Southern Signs and Cranes Service as presented.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on item number eight? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number nine is consider authorizing city manager execute an economic development service agreement between the City of Granbury and the Granbury Chamber of Commerce. Chris, if you want to give us a little background on that, if you would, please.
You bet. As y'all are well aware, we've been talking about trying to address economic development in our community for a couple of years now. We did identify through our strategic plan that we don't want to do it the way we used to do it. And we're trying to make it where it's not a political organization, or not elected official servant on that board. And in the past, what you've done is created an economic development corporation and partnered with the county, and that, that stopped working for whatever reason. Funding began to be stagnant and not coming forth. And so that development corporation was dissolved, and that was probably, I don't know what year that was, 2014, maybe is what I remember reading about that before I interviewed. And, and so here we are with a new idea of working with the chamber. Chamber's been working with the city behind the scenes already on, on economic development since I've been here. They've been right-hand to me. And they do allow the ability for a developer to work directly with them and not be under the Open Records Act. And so there's confidentialities out there that we're not able to provide as a city. And so as witnessed with our project that's still on the burner called Madison Park, they've been instrumental in putting all that together and working with, with city staff to, to pull that together. And recently, we met with another developer on another project just last week, and Mike was there with us, and he's got a working relationship with those folks from the previous arrangement. But long story short, the time has come to begin to act. The county is interested in partnering. The Chamber of Commerce is interested in partnering, and I think that the city council's interested. So we've put this agreement together in basically a, a brief budget. And if you'll remember that we earmarked funds in our budget for next year for this purpose. And so we're, we put it together, it's pretty straightforward. The chamber would hire an executive professional, trained professional, and with that, we would pay for our share, or more of our share than, than what we would. If you decide not to do this, I want to hire the person that we're talking about hiring. So if you decide to do this some other way. But right now, it looks like the best way to do it, they have the office facility there. It does keep it in the third-party hands where the, there's confidentiality between the, the potential development and, and the Open Records Act. Of course, any incentives or abatements that would be, that would be presented from our economic development partner that we employ and partner with through the chamber. And, and so that would come back to you for, you know, any kind of decision or anything like that. But what it does is it takes the city manager off of that development role, and where I end up having to tell them bad news or something, it kind of sours the grapes whenever they need to, you know, here's a, here's a road right away you need to be sure and dedicate or whatever. So there's some, some, some tenderness there that, that goes into a negotiation when your city manager's wearing more than one cap. So I would be happy to answer any questions. The agreement is in your packet. I don't want to go over that extensively through this meeting, it'd take all night. But I'd be happy to discuss. We have Mike Scott here, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, to help answer any questions. Looks like a few of his board members are here with him. And turn it over to questions.
Thank you, Chris. I'm gonna kick it off with a question. I see you've got investors 5,000. Is that gonna be a, a set number? Are we, are we gonna go out and do this every year, try to get other investors? Or is that somebody just says, hey, I want to be a part of it? How's that gonna work?
Well, why don't you ask Mike Scott?
Mike Scott?
Because this is his budget. We're simply providing cash towards the organization.
Mike Scott, go ahead and tell them who you are.
Yes, sir. Mike Scott, Granbury Chamber of Commerce. I want to recognize one of the officers of our corporation, Cody Garrison, is here with me tonight. Thank, thank you, Cody, for coming. And we also have Maureen Griffin in the audience, who is my marketing and communications director. So thank you for the opportunity. Actually, 5,000 is a very low number, Mayor.
Okay.
I, I'll just give you an example and tell you what's going on around us. Parker County just recently started up a new economic development organization. All of their cities in Parker County have joined that organization. My estimate right now is that they've got about a $400,000-
Wow.
... budget that they're, they're working with right now. I think if we get, we also have another economic development professional in the room back here, and Dan Rogers, who was the ED Director for many, many years in Burney. And I've worked with Dan a lot, and I think Dan will tell you that the budget you're looking at is the budget Burney had in 2009 approximately. Yeah. And so that's a really thin, that's a really thin budget. I think when we get a professional in here and we start working it, you know, the big problem, and, and the folks that were on the, the ED Board for years, and, and I've watched, I was on the Economic Development Board as a, as a not ex officio member from the time I got here until it, until it basically dissolved. And one of the big issues was, we could never raise private funding because nope, everybody looked at it as a city-county operation, and nobody was gonna donate private funds to the city to run economic development. So every time we tried to do fundraising, we, we stubbed our toe. I think there are plenty of partners out there. I'll just give you one example. Chris and I met with, with the owner of the Commerce Center this week, and he is 100% behind economic development being in the chamber. In fact, he even volunteered to go with us and speak to the county. So there are a lot of people out there, like Jerry Durant, that I believe will step up to the plate once they see we're doing something and we see that, that we've got a program going and, and that it's working. So I, I, $5,000 was just a number. I stuck in there thinking that we might not start this program until January, February. But quite honestly, I mean, we're, we're ready to start almost any day here. And I've already had two unsolicited folks come and talk to me about maybe putting their hat in the ring for the job. So that, that's a long-winded answer to a short question, but that's, that's where we are.
Right, and so what this does, I just, I'm, I'm hearing that we'll have, or you'll have a group of folks that will be continuing to try to get people that want to invest or want to, maybe on a short-term or long-term contract, or, or even a contract at all.
Well, I, you know, I did this in Florida. I had, we had a very similar situation in my, my chamber in Florida. We had an economic development corporation. Basically, I mean, I'm a fundraiser. That's what I did for seven years at a college in Florida. And the way you do fundraising is you go out and say, we, we would like for you to make a commitment to do, give us $5,000 every year for the next five years for economic development. A lot of companies will step up to the plate and do that. We raised close to $500,000, pretty much without even breaking the sweat. Much larger county, much larger chamber, much larger business community, but still, the funding is out there. The thing I have to be careful of is I don't want them taking it out of the chamber pocket and putting it in the other pocket. So, so it's gonna be a separate entity. It's not gonna be like a chamber membership. It will be you are donating this money, and it's earmarked for economic development, and that's how it'll be used.
But with it, with it under the chamber, you'll be the guy and, or the director, whoever will be the person that goes out here and start-
Yes, sir. That'll be, I mean, that's-
We're trying to take as much load off this guy as we can.
No, 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 we're gonna do everything. That'll be part of the effort. I mean, the job is gonna be workforce development, education, fundraising, basically getting the word out about economic development and what we're doing. So whoever we are is gonna be a busy, busy person. But Chris's point is you're gonna have somebody that gets up every morning and they do economic development and that's all they do. I can't do it, he can't do it.
I agree with that.
Yeah. So I will say, I would, my hat's off to Chris and particularly to Sarah. I mean, Sarah does an incredible job. I did a real quick count before I came over here. Just since I've been involved in this, we've responded to over 30 site visitor, site selector packages and Sarah's done all that heavy lifting. And I will tell you that in, we're now, we've had two Fortune 500 companies that we've had the opportunity to deal with. Eventually, we're gonna snag one of these guys and we're still, we're still in really good shape for, and we've got a third company now that's looking to come to Granbury. So we need, we need to strike while the iron is hot and we need somebody focusing on it every day, all day, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So I think most people here realize the history behind this and how it's been a joint effort between county and city and some of the politics that get involved in that. And that's kind of why it dissolved the last time because one side pulls funding and the other side says, well, we can't carry the full burden of this. I think, so the council, we need to realize this is a five-year commitment. And I'm hoping that the county has that same vision of five years because you can't say in a year we're gonna come back and judge you because it's like any sales effort, any sale, any marketing effort, you can't look at it six months later and say thumbs up, thumbs down, have we made any progress? Because these are lifetime decisions for these corporations. So I'm hoping that the council will keep in mind, this is a five-year commitment, minimum five-year commitment for us.
Yeah. And that also allows you to attract a good person that's gonna come in here and not wonder every year, am I gonna have a job next year? Because nobody, because I'm hearing noises that nobody's gonna fund it next year. So that, that's the reason we failed most of the time was just we kept, I mean, I think, I think we've had at least four directors in there in the 11 or 12 years that I've been here.
Reason I've been here.
And we had one of them, one of them tried it twice. I mean, you know, he was a slow learner, but it took him a while to figure out. I'm not gonna do this.
Nobody's gonna step into uncertainty. And if they do, is that the person you want anyway?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Hang on, I think Chris got something he wants to add to it real quick.
I just, I just want to say that economic development is a slow-moving project. I want to give you this example because I had something to do with it and I kind of want to brag, but also I want to tell you how long it takes. In 2009, where I was managing, they lost a defense contract because of politics and they sent it to Wisconsin. And it was, it was 3,500 jobs for my community. And that got our attention. So we went to battle trying to figure out, number one, how to save the plant and then number two, how to repurpose that million-two-square-foot facility. And we were reaching out to people and we met with a group from China that was interested in making copper tubing in that facility, taking about a third of it. 2019, they finally made the decision to do that. But it takes planting the seeds all along the way to get those big dollars, those big projects, those manufacturing jobs to your community. It doesn't happen just by sitting here responding to the governor's office with a request for information and the next year it happened. That just doesn't happen. It's very rare that it would unless you are attracting an Amazon where they're into retail and that kind of thing. But manufacturing, if we're looking for manufacturing jobs, it's a slow-growth industry. It's a slow-growth decision-making process. The one that we're dealing with right now is trying to decide whether to change their technology, which will require about 100 less employees than what they were planning originally. And that all goes into the equation for incentives and opportunities that they'd be able to get from the state for incentives. So that's, that's kind of the big decision. It takes time. So, you know, if we, if we, we're still here five years from now and we haven't landed that big fish that we keep talking about, don't be surprised because it takes a long time to get them here. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, and I don't think we're, you know, we're getting an EDC just to land that big fish. There's a lot of other things that we need to be doing too for...
Business retention.
Yeah, for future growth and stuff like... Mr. Allen, you have something?
Thank you. Mr. Mike Scott.
Yes, sir.
I'm a member of the chamber and I believe in it. And you and I, we're on that same board together, EDC. And it was, whenever the county or the city said, I'm pulling out, the other one got out quick. They weren't gonna put the full amount in. I'm looking here at this deal and it's saying government contract with Granbury, 128,000. And with a county, 100. Why are we more than they are? And I'm gonna just ask the question.
Actually, when, when the city manager and I first started talking about that, about it, that was before I'd actually talked to the county. And basically, we figured that $150,000 was probably doable. I think when, I think when Chris, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but when he, I think when y'all sent him back to the drawing board to trim things down a little bit, we dropped down to 128, okay? And it just turns out that basically the county has got $100,000 that they can spend. So I'm, you know, and when they, when they approved their budget, they approved a line item of $100,000. You guys approved a line item of 128,000. But what you're really asking is how much is the chamber gonna put into this? And I'm getting ready to tell you that.
That's the next question.
We're gonna, I know where you're going, Tony.
I got one more after that.
I worked with you for too many years. The chamber, first of all, to do a contract like this, the normal administrative fee on this kind of contract is 15 to 20%. So if you got a 200, let's just for round numbers, $200,000 contract, the chamber's already putting $40,000 into it because I'm not, I'm not charging you anything as an administrative fee. When I did the same thing in Florida, I charged the county a 15% administrative fee and that was back in 1995.
What sort of town was that?
So that's, so that's part of it. The rest of the stuff we're putting in there is, is all of our in-kind labor, my, my employees that are gonna help, that are gonna pick up the load on, on doing the administrative processes and all that. So I'm gonna tell you that the chambers, the chamber's nut in this thing is close to 100 grand. So it's not like the chamber's not playing ball.
If they count your pay, probably 150.
I'm sorry?
If they count your pay, maybe 150. I'm kidding, Mike. But no, I, I think it, everybody said the right thing. You can't do it overnight. And the other thing, poor Joey. Yeah, he was hired twice. And the guy you mentioned, Will Go, guaranteed his salary the second time. You remember that, Mr. Rant?
Yeah.
And then after he didn't get his way on something, he jerked it. I think good donations are great, but I think whenever you start making deals with people, developers, sometimes you get yourself in trouble. And I think it's a great idea. I'm glad it's out of the city's hands. I had two, two commissioners call me today and asked for my opinion. And I tell them the same thing I just told you.
Oh, good. I appreciate it.
It didn't work with the county and it didn't work with the city because we, it's too much politics.
I appreciate it.
And we get out and we don't have you up here like we did recently, every quarter, drilling you on how much money you're spending, you'd probably do a hell of a better job.
Yes, sir.
I'm for you.
I agree. I appreciate that. How much can I put Rock Ridge down for?
My next home. I only, I'll take away 15%.
Yes, sir. Happy to answer any other questions. I mean, you guys have been great. Chris and I have been working great together. I, I mean, we're going the right direction. I've been here for 13 years. This is the best working cooperative relationship that I've seen in 13 years and, and that hats off to all you guys. And I think we're gonna get there. We got a long way to go, but I think this is a step in the right direction. So thank you for your confidence.
One last thing here, you know, if, you know, we vote on this thing tonight and we don't really have the buy-in to the county, what's, what's the backup plan there, Mr. Cawthorne?
What's the backup plan there, if you want to? I think, I think we would reassess it come next, next, next council meeting.
I mean, I'm sure that Mr. Allen's talked to them already. You've talked, I mean, and I feel good about them also, but I'm just saying, we don't have that in writing here.
I'm, I'm gonna bet you lunch that they will approve it, okay? And, and, but if they don't, my chamber board and Cody will, will, will Roger up to this. My chamber board said do it anyway, we'll step up to the plate, so.
And Mr. Allen, you failed to understand too, we've been paying this guy extra money, you know? So that money now will...
Yeah. You know, the difference is though, that our overall budget is gonna drop down to really bare bones if it's just the city and the chamber. I'm not gonna have, we're definitely gonna have to do some fundraising.
I gotta go to the county and see what kind of deal I can work with them.
Well, yeah, and we really have had a team that's been working on this very hard. Chris has been involved in it too and, you know, it's something we need here. It's because every time we turn around, people are coming in, where's your EDC department? Who is your EDC guy or gal or whoever, you know? And we don't have that. And, but we've got, like you said, we've been doing a good job with what we had, but, you know, he, he needs to wear the hat that he's supposed to be wearing in full-time, so. Counsel, you got any more questions for Mike or Chris or anybody else? Thank you, Mike. So counsel, there's no more discussion on this. I'll entertain a motion to, to approve authorizing the city manager to execute an economic development service between, between the City of Granbury and the Granbury Chamber of Commerce.
So moved.
Ooh. I have that motion by Councilperson Reiner and Councilman Allen. He's got the second. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Look forward to it. Our next item is to consider appointments to the following city boards and commissions. We've got some boards that are, we've got some folks that had to come off of them and some people that have moved, so we've got some unexpired terms. And so we're gonna start out, folks, with the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill one unexpired term ending in January 2020. And I believe on that one there... Bring it up here. We have one, we have one applicant here, which is Richard, and I butcher your name, it's Hafes. Hafes, Hafes, okay. I'm gonna get it one of these days. And Richard has, he is on one of our, he is on our Ethics Committee Board, but he is willing to step down from that and serve on the Planning and Zoning. So counsel, we'll, we'll start with that one. He is the only applicant right now, so if there's no other recommendations...
I'll go out on a limb here.
You go on right there on that limb.
I'd like to nominate Richard Hafes for the P&amp;Z.
Thank you. We've got a motion to nominate Richard for that P&amp;Z. We have a second? We have a second by Councilman Wadley? Any more discussion on that appointment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Congratulations, Richard. Thank you, do a fine job there. Our next one is a Public Television Channel Advisory Board to fill one expired term ending January 20. Here we have two applicants. We have Corey Caldwell and McGregory Warden. And I think you've seen their applications. So counsel, counsel, as we've looked at those, they're both pretty, pretty, could fill the role. And here again, we've got somebody that had to leave that one, they have moved. So we've got two applicants here, but one, one term here and it's the unexpired term. So counsel, do you have any discussion? Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselperson Reiner.
I'll nominate Mr. McGregory Warden.
I have a nomination of Gary Warden.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Mobley. So I have a motion and a second for Mr. McGregory Warden to serve on the Public Television Channel Advisory Board. Any more discussion on that one, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That one is approved. Mr. Warden in the house, is he? Our next one is our Zoning Board of Adjustments to fill one unexpired term ending in January 2021. As Mr. Baker had moved away and so that leaves that open till that time. Now, on that one, counsel, we do have, don't have an applicant, I believe, right, Carla? Is that right? But we do have a, we do have Ms. Mary Ella, who is serving as a alternate. And the suggestion would be to move her into a full-time, a full-time position there and then later on, take applications for an alternate.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Has she been made aware of this? That she's being, possibly being nominated? When she took the position as an alternate, she was said on notice that she could be put in a full-time...
Carla's talking.
So that's a long yes.
That's a yes. That's a long yes, yes.
Thank you. I know.
So counsel, any more discussion on that one? Any questions? Do I have a motion? I have the motion to move Mary Ella into full-time by Councilman Gorgon and a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number 11 is consider nominating three candidates for the Hood County Central Appraiser District Board of Directors to fill three positions with terms expiring on December 31st, 2019 and adopt Resolution Number 1925 to submit the names and addresses of the said candidates to the Chief Appraiser of the Hood County Appraiser District. Okay? What we have here, counsel, we've got three positions here that are coming, they're, they're coming up and all three people have expressed an interest to stay on that board. With that said, you can still nominate, or you can still nominate somebody of your choice if you choose to do so. Those applicants, those people wanting to currently stay on those positions are Walter Baldry, Terry Johnson, and Bobby Mayberry. And those terms are all gonna expire on December 31st, 2019. So counsel, is there any discussion on this or anybody have any other nominees that they would like to throw out there?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Of those three, are they all, all three of those live in the city limits?
I can say no. Carla, do you have that information or anybody else?
Johnson lives in Tolu.
None of them live in the city limits.
Okay, there you go.
One of them lives in Granbury ISD School District. And I don't know which one it is.
Well, I know that two of them have been on there quite a while, Baldry and, and Mayberry, but...
Mayberry and Johnson lives in Tolu.
They both live in Tolu?
Yes, sir.
Both Baldry and Johnson live in Tolu?
No, it's Mayberry.
Mayberry, Mayberry and Johnson. So I guess what I'm hearing is that, you know, we'd like to be represented in the city, I guess?
Right. And I've talked to one person that lives in the city and Ronnie Hurd, who does a lot for the city, and I, and he agreed to serve on that board. It's just a matter of paring down this list to where we only have three.
So bear in mind...
And I would like to nominate him.
So that's what we would do, counsel, but we, we need to present three names to the Appraiser District and then they'll, they'll be submitted and then they'll go through to the other entities where they'll be voted on also. So you're, if you're, if you're wanting to put another name in there, we, you're right, we'd have to figure out which one we want to put in place of that.
Or somebody's making a nomination of three.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I would like to nominate Ronnie Hurd, Terry Johnson, and Bobby Mayberry.
I have a nomination for Ronnie Hurd, Terry Johnson... Bobby Mayberry.
I'll second that.
Can we, can we add to that?
Sure.
I'd like to add Steve Fortner to it and take off Mayberry.
But he's, Mr. Mayor?
We, we got a motion, no first for this?
Got a motion, a second.
And a second. Ronnie Hurd, Terry Johnson... And Bobby Mayberry. Now, if he was going to add to that...
Well, he made a, Tony made a motion to amend that motion, which requires a second.
Yeah. So Mr. Allen's, Mr. Allen's making a motion to amend that motion to add a different name on there. So do we have a, do we have a second on the minute? So do we have a, do we have a second on amendment?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan. Do we have a second to amend that motion?
Can we talk to him?
So your motion, Mr. Allen, is Ronnie Hurd, Terry Johnson, and Steve Fortner?
Yes.
Well, we already amended it. So do I have a second?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Corrigan. So now our motion stands as Ronnie Hurd, Terry Johnson, and Steve Fortner to serve on the Appraisal District Board of Directors from the City of Granbury. Have any more discussion, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselperson Reiner.
Mr. Fortner lives in the city as well.
Yes.
Yes, he does.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
What, what business is Mr. Fortner in?
Real estate.
Real estate.
So is it, is it a good idea to have a real estate, a realtor on the appraisal district board? Would be my question.
I don't see where it makes the whole lot of sense.
No prohibition against it.
There is none. We've looked at research and actually-
I think he knows the value of property better than anybody up here sitting here in this house.
I mean, actually, we've got, Mr. Johnson's serving as an elected official, matter of fact, so, you know, there's no prohibition on that.
I'm not, I'm not questioning his ability, Mr. Allen. Nobody's questioning anybody's abilities to serve, or even-
I was surprised you didn't know anything.
I'm sorry, I thought I was talking about-
You've been on his house.
Or questioning his ability to serve, or his knowledge in that area. I'm just, I'm just looking at the appropriateness. I have no problem with the proposed list that is-
He's more than painted a house.
I'm sorry, I guess, I was doing this, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mobley, go ahead and finish. Mr. Allen, hold your comments until we get done here.
I have a problem with the, with the, the item that's, that's before us right now, or the list that's before us. I would, it was just an honest question that I felt was appropriate. Thank you.
And I think what we're doing, too, is that, as, as we look at this, we've got a lot of folks that's been serving on there a long time, and I think what we're trying to, to, and, and the school board has reached out also, but you want to get representation, whether they're a realtor, whether they're a, a realtor, I'm sorry. I was corrected about that sometime, but whether they're a realtor, or whether they serve in a, as a, as a elected official even, because they can serve there also, I found that out. And, but they want to be, they, they want to be able to represent either the school, the city, or the county, or somewhere thereabouts. And I think it's been kind of lopsided for a little, little while, so.
It's been, Mayor, hadn't it been several, or you have to go through several school, county?
Yeah, you still have to go through all the, you have to, it has to be voted through De Cordova, I mean, and all those, you know, even Ama, all those, you know, so. But these are the selections that we're going to send down. So we've got a motion and a second for Ronnie Hurd, Terry Johnson, and Steve Fortner. Any more discussion, Counsel? Here are none. I'll entertain a motion, and I'm going to take a, I'm going to take a, okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve those nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Ronnie Hurd, Terry Johnson, and Steve Fortner would be the candidates for the Central Appraiser District Board of Directors from the city. And do I, I think I need to do a, we need, we need to go ahead and approve Resolution Number 1925 to submit those names. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of Resolution Number 1925, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We will submit those names to the Chief Appraiser of Hood County. At this night, at this time, I will now declare that Granbury City Council convened into open session that all the members are present, and the city council will go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, Section 551074, Personnel Matters, Municipal Judge, and City Secretary Annual Review, Section 551071, Consultation with the Attorney Pending of Compete Litigations, Section 551072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property, Section 551087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. The council will now go into executive session. I think we're all out here, most of us. The council has reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in closed session.